It is six o'clock. I will go ahead and call the December 20th Monticello School Board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. Mission, universal, ready to be done.
And I will now call for an approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
By Melissa, seconded by Candy. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six zero. And I'm not aware of any citizens comments for the night. So we can go on to our consent agenda. Board members, you would have received everything in the packet. If there's anything that needs to be discussed, now would be the time. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six zero. And now on to our collaborative connections.
Good. We have some wonderful donations again, so I'd like to bring those forward. First one is our Community United Methodist Church. And they have donated for the purpose of a Maker Space in our Little Mountain Elementary. So Maker Space is like a STEM area that kids can go do some exploring. We also have another donation of $1,000 to the Monticello Dance Team from Schwimmer.
Lerner Winner.
Schlener.
Schlener.
Winter, thank you.
Lerner Winner.
That's tough for me to say. And then Riverside Church, $100 gift cards to Target, $1,500 total. And that was going to Monticello High School, supporting students in need. Then we also have. Can you make that bigger for me Gavin? I don't have my stuff in front of me, thanks. Alright. We also have Walker Charities for $2,000, a 3D printer station at the Monticello High School for our Career Technical Education Department. And then moving down, we have one more to go here and some special guests here that are gonna do a little presentation in person. And so I think what we'll do is we're gonna accept the donation if we could here to all of them. And then I'm gonna invite the Lions Club up for a picture, talk about two of the programs to really highlight to have a great partnership that we have with our Lions Club. So let's go ahead and question first, and then we'll invite the Lions Club up for pictures.
Somebody have that?
I do. Therefore be it resolved by the Monticello School Board, 882, to gratefully accept the following donations. Community United Methodist Church for $500 for the purchase of Maker Space Resources and Activities at Little Mountain. Schlener Winner and Company for $1,000 for the Monticello Dance Team. Monticello Lions Club for $8,500 for the Leg Up on Literacy. Riverside Church for 15 $100 gift cards to Target, $1,500 total, to provide support to the Monticello High School students who need a little kindness this holiday season. And the Walker Charities, $2,000 for the 3D printer and wash station at the Monticello High School.
Second.
Resolution read by Jamie, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion or resolution passes six zero. Now we'll have the Lions Club up.
I could, I'm gonna invite Cindy Foshing as Larry presents the check. And Wes here. Collaboration going on with the Lions Club.
Yeah. So Monticello has gratefully accepted a gift from the Lions Club of $8,500. And part of the funding that that's gonna go toward is literacy in our district. So what we've done is we've hired a consultant through the St. Croix River Education Center who's working with our teachers on literacy and our teachers K through five. So we have teachers, special ed, reading specialist, Title I, really working, we have about 18 training sessions with about 35, 40 teachers who are participating in those sessions, really learning about best practices and strategies on instruction in the classroom to help improve our literacy scores. And so thankfully, we have this money that we were able to do that. Otherwise, we would not have been able to hire this person to help us with our literacy instruction. So we're looking for great gains in our scores because of all the work we're doing and our teachers are doing. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
One thing I just like to echo when it comes to literacy, and a lot of people in the public don't understand this, but not one training at a university, so into the, they don't receive one. And so being able to unify the training, the science of our district, like being an expert in the field of literacy, which is very important, that every, you know, foundation of skill for kids, and reading, and it starts, although I found it important, so we're really just truly living, having a kid today, my foundation, so we really appreciate it. So I don't know if you want to say something about it, but the reason we really came up with this is after last year with distance learning, we were thinking that we've got mom and dad trying to help with reading and things like this. And being a former educator 50 years ago in that, but knowing how difficult it is in the classroom as with multiple kids, well, when you've got all the parents trying to teach, and then I know that the way I taught and the teacher next to me, the way they taught, it's all different. And when I talked to Eric about this, he mentioned that they'd like to standardize all of us, well, all of you, not me anymore, but all of you, working together. So we've got a standard form coming all the way across will make it a lot easier that if we do have to go to distance learning, we have the same voice coming across the whole district will make it much easier for parents and everybody else. We can go with one force, a voice all the way through, and gradually it'll even go up from cave all the way through 12, same voice, everybody speaking together makes a big difference. And that came across with, yeah.
I said that, I'm gonna agree. So this is where we started pilot elementary, and working our way up into the secondary schools after this year. We're adults too for this year.
As long as we're talking to teachers, I think it's a good time to give another program a plug. Wes almost instrumental in bringing up our team, specific background, all this community to question, but they just really look at teachers that are doing that great work is not only comes out of, but.
May I? You can hear her.
Oh, please do.
Of the ways that they can make connections with kids and touch them and foster. And the Lions have noticed what they could do.
I don't know, can you hear me alright without that? Or, okay. Play that game. Back in, I think it was 2018, I wish this was one of our ideas, but it wasn't. Back in 2018, some of you may have caught a little blurb on, I think it was Carolina Levin News, organization over in Forest Lake, Forest Lake Lions actually had a programs like this, tweaked it a lot from there, but they had a program like this, intrigued us. I brought it to the Board of Directors, and the Monticello Lions thought it was a good idea. I recruited four other people to help with putting the program together. But what it really amounts to is, I have two educators in my family, daughters at the time, both teachers. I went to them and asked them about this, but what happens a lot, these teachers use their own money for many things. Now, it might seem like just a little here, a little there, you know, and maybe, maybe the school district mandates that or something, I don't know, but all the teachers do it, whether you know it or not. They all got money out of their pocket. This program basically is designed to try to reimburse them. Now, we're not trying to take over, excuse me, any budget money that the school district has for these teachers in the class, but we're trying to embellish it a little bit so they don't have to use their own money for small things. I've got some examples here. I don't know how interested you are in it, but first off, some of the things that they're eligible to receive money in, and we've had some that we've had to deny because we can only do so much, but some of the items that are eligible for this reimbursement would be, oh, it's on this page, items purchased for the benefit of the students. Any such expense that the school district cannot fund would be eligible. Small individual teacher reimbursements may be submitted with a paid receipt of items if they wish. If there is a proposed project item that would exceed $100, by a team of teachers or a teacher, it could be submitted and pre-approved. Payment would go to the assigned teacher, and a follow-up of the student impact would be asked for. It's at the discretion of the Monticello Lions reimbursement program to approve all or part of the requested amount. By saying that, what we mean is sometimes they'll ask for quite a bit of money, and we take a look at it, and we maybe can't do it all, but we'll do as much as we can. We tried to limit it at $100 the first year. We found that it needed a little bit, a little bit more from time to time. So now we really don't have a designated amount, but we try to keep it within reason and try to spread it out evenly. Throughout the program in 2019, 2020, we had actually 62 submissions. Now, these submissions are over the internet on Monticello Lions page. I have some printouts here, I'll give each one of you today if you're interested in the information that's on that webpage. And it directs these teachers to another position where they can give some information about what they need the money for or what they've already spent the money on. And then this goes to a team of five Lions, and they all look at that, critique it, and we try really, really hard to approve it. I mean, it's gotta be really out there. If we don't approve it, we do the best we can. There's a lot of talk between the five of us, and we try to not involve the rest of the Lions with it. They've deeded us with the responsibility to, you know, keep it, keep it under control and so forth, and we've got some really good people that are doing, making these decisions.
Do you want to talk about how much we have done to deeded each year?
Yep, I've got that here too. Some of the non-accepted items are like ongoing startup materials that need refunding year after year. In other words, you know, I don't know, it's hard to explain, but things come up and we can see that, hey, we can't get hooked on this year after year after year, so we have to be a little bit careful. Field trips, expenses like that, we kind of anticipate that the parents should get involved a little bit with that. And food usually as a reward or handy baskets in the classroom or something like that. We try to stay away from that. Again, 2019, 2020, we had 62 submissions, and of those submissions, we gave out $8,727. That was a total of about $140, $141 bucks apiece. In 2021, the Lions decided we'd do it again, and we budgeted up to $10,000 a year, about the most we really wanted to do on this. So you understand, a lot of people think the Monticello Lions are in pull tabs, that we got unlimited resources, money, and things like this. But there's only certain things we can use that money for. Can't use pull tab money for this. This comes out of our hard work. It either comes out of our general fund, which is our dues, or activity fund, which is selling pancakes or doing our brew fest, things like that. That's the money we can use for this, okay? In 2021, we had 42 submissions. It was down a little bit because of the COVID year, so we were, we assumed it was that reason, that toward the end of the year, we cut it off, maybe a month early, only because of the COVID situation we had going on in the schools and stuff. But still, we donated $5,560, which I thought was pretty good. That was like $132 average per donation. In 2021, 22, we're down quite a bit. I don't know why, we've done the same, you know, reaching out there and so forth, but we've got 16 submissions, but we've given away $2,652, which is an average of $165 per request. So total to date, we've had 120 requests. We've given out $16,939 in this program. Now, how do we give it? The check is written out to the teacher at the school because we can, because we're using activity money and we could give it right to the teacher. But one of the things that we want to do is funnel it through the school's principal. So whenever I have a packet of checks, I go to the, I goes to the principal's office and I give it to them so they can review it. So they kind of know what's going on in this classroom a little bit. And then he, he or she will get the checks to the teachers at that point, and that's how they receive the money. And we get some feedback from teachers, some we do, some we don't. We don't require it. We keep it a little bit on the lam, you know, and just use, you know, responsibility of their honesty and so forth, and we don't question it. It's been a good program. I think all the Lions are proud of what we do. Everybody knows teachers. In fact, we have one teacher in your school district is one of the, one of the people that we use as a reference to go through these. I can list those if you're interested, the five people that are, that are doing it. Myself, Dr. Glenn Nemec, Jacob Erickson, who works for Paulson O'Donnell Erickson, Annie Emanuel, and Mike Benedetto. So those are the five that read, that read these submissions and determine where to put them. So anyway, in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're, what we're doing with it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those or.
I have one quick question. If a teacher didn't have enough liquid to purchase items, is there a mechanism to do?
Yes, same thing. As I said earlier, you can do a preapproval for any amount. Hey, I want to do, in fact, we get a lot of them for preapproval. We want to do this. And a lot of them are book related. A lot of teachers in their classroom want bilingual books, or they want special books for certain studies that they're doing at that given time, or even bookshelves, because they got no place to put the books. Some very interesting, very interesting reading on somebody as far as they need the money for, and it kind of, I report to the Lions every so often on the requests, what they are, and it's kind of a good feeling we have for helping. And every year, I don't think we have much trouble convincing them to do another year, but I suppose we'll be doing it for a while, as long as they.
The name, the teachers are not sure.
No, but they can be.
It's just what they have requested, Wes shares periodically, some of the requested items that they.
Or thank you, thank you letters.
Can we get thank you letters, things like that? And I've never been asked to come into a classroom yet or anything like that to see it, but maybe someday I'll be able to do that. But yeah, it's, we just, we get some, we get four, we just approved, let me just go to this once. Some of the approvals have been, we just approved $480 for a teacher at Pinewood Elementary. We approved $299, again, for someone at Pinewood, $450 for a Little Mountain Project, $286 for a Little Mountain Project, $190 over at Pinewood again. I'm talking about Pinewood, of all the submissions we've had, over 50% every year come from Pinewood. So they're doing something right up there, as far as getting back to us. We don't see that all that much from the other class, other schools, but quite often I'm visiting all five schools when I drop the checks off. Usually timing wise, we only meet once a month. So these submissions will come in, and I'll, I'll turn them over to the committee, and they'll all read them, offer comments or approve or not approve or whatever. And then from that point, they'll go to the Board of Directors, actually don't even get approval at the Board of Directors. I go to the Board of Directors treasurer, give him a list of checks to fill out. So the Board of Directors don't even know where the money is going unless they ask, you know, and then of course I'll share. But, and then I get the checks, and then I give them to the different schools.
I saw two from the director taking notes here on their phone in the paper, so I can venture to guess that there's gonna be some more additions here shortly, so everybody knows, and this is especially for you Lions members, it's really hard to ever say no to you guys when you support the way what else the Lions do, so you can count on me for the dunk tank again next year. That's not really what the community wants to hear, but.
Thank you.
You guys are just so awesome to us and amazing, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
Thank you.
Work with Wright Tech as well?
Wright Tech, yeah, we do.
Community College.
I've never had a submission from Wright Tech. We decided early on, it just, we thought we would get inundated, we'd have to close the thing down every year, to be honest with you. We had Mike Benedetto on the deal, and he said, you know, there's 600 teachers in this school, you know, all these schools and a bunch.
He's not 600, he's off a little bit.
Well, yeah, but this was, this was the discussion, and he said, $10,000 might not be enough money. So far, it has been.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we can move on to our innovation and leadership part of the agenda and handle the 2022 board meeting dates with Clay.
Just a quick action item here to approve our dates for the upcoming calendar year. We are scheduling dates all the way through the year, given that we'll have this board intact through the, through the calendar year. So for the most part, dates are pretty straightforward. We have a couple of, I guess, different dates for our first meetings with, the first one in January happening on the 10th due to the district holidays falling the Thursday, Friday, the weekend before, and just some office shortages that week, so just to make sure we can be properly prepared. And same with March, we have the first meeting falling on the second Monday due to spring break in the district the week prior. Otherwise, the rest of the meetings follow our calendar pretty straightforward.
Meeting a motion to approve.
Yes, we do.
I'll move to approve the meeting dates for 2021 as listed.
2022.
2022, sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, or motion made by Kathy, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Clay. Now on to the polling place.
Yeah, so another one here. Yeah, so another one here, kind of a formality. We annually pass our polling place resolution, which is essentially in the event of a standalone election, which I don't believe we anticipate happening this year. But we, we still pass this resolution as a formality. So it just says that in the event that we did have standalone election, it would be held at the one combined polling place at the Monticello Community Center.
Does this resolution need to be read?
The highlighted part could be read. I think we also could just move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Clay. Now on to our final levy approval with Tina.
Good evening. Last board meeting, we had our truth and taxation hearing and haven't had any questions or concerns come to me since then. So tonight, asking for board approval on our final levy adoption for pay 2022. The total levy for next, for fiscal year '23, or payable '22, is $12,331,379 and 4 cents. It is a decrease from the prior year of 0.75% or $93,000.
Any questions for Tina? Does somebody want to make the motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Tina. Now for our teaching and learning course approval with Steve Fashin.
Good evening. So Monticello High School is going to propose three new courses this coming school year. And you can go ahead to the next slide. Whoops. A few things missing. That's okay. So you'll notice that the first, that's okay. Okay. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Yeah, so the first two courses that I'm going to talk about are CTE courses. Those are our career and technical education courses that we're proposing be added for this coming school year. And these are the CTE clusters. And so if you look around there, those are the different areas of CTE courses that we're offering either at our high school or at Wright Tech. The couple of courses that I'm going to be mentioning will come from the education and training career cluster. And the other one is the business and management career cluster. Go ahead to the next. So what we're working on is creating pathways. So if a school creates a pathway, that's like a guideline for a student of a cluster of classes that if they could take classes within this cluster and pathway, it gives them a huge leg up when they go on to the career in college. And oftentimes, if they take three or more credits in a particular career pathway, universities or employers will give them either extra pay or give them credits for those career clusters that they've come in with. So we're working towards this at the high school, just so that you know. Go ahead and move forward. The first class is Introduction to Business and Entrepreneurship, which is a CTE course. Keep in mind that all CTE courses, well, not all expenses, but many of the CTE course expenses are reimbursable at 35% reimbursement. So you can reimburse teachers' salaries. You can reimburse mileage, instructional supplies, and any professional development that's needed can all be reimbursed through the CTE levy at 35%. So we're proposing to add one or two sections of Intro to Business and Career or Entrepreneurship next year. There's a summary of the course description and a rationale for why we would want to offer this. Approximately 15% of adults actually are entrepreneurs. So that makes sense that 15% of our students will maybe someday be entrepreneurs. This would be a very important course to take then. We don't have an Intro to Business course right now. We have a lot of marketing, accounting, but no Intro to Business courses. And so this is an important piece to be adding to our career pathway for business. Move forward. Staffing necessary? There really won't be any additional staffing necessary. Really what they'll do is they'll move around some of the courses to maybe be offered every other year so that they have room to offer Intro to Business. And so this is going to be a 10 through 12 elective. And costs that might be associated, about $700 for some extra themed books. So books like How to Win Friends and Influence People, Good to Great, The Lean Startup and so forth, or other resources there. So just some supplemental resources. We're going to use a free curriculum though, that's through Open Ed, online curriculum, which is very good. There's a lot of really good free online resources there. So we're going to start with that. So there'll be no expenses for books, very few expenses for those supplemental materials, which are also reimbursable at 35%, by the way. And then also the staff development of $480, which is reimbursable at 35%. So I see the costs associated with adding this as very, very minimal, probably under $1,000 to add this course next year. The next one is a College in the Schools Introduction to Education CTE course. So it kind of hits both ends of the spectrum. It's a C, Career and Tech Ed course, but it's also a CIS course for college credit. It's for college credits that a student could get for taking this course. It is a one semester course. It's got a practicum with it for 30 hours. And it'll be one semester in the fall so that students can do, can take their 30 hours the next semester. Oh, by the way, you have to have a specific license in order to teach this. And one of our fax teachers actually has the appropriate license to be able to teach our CTE course. So it will always be there because she'll always have that license for that. The summary for this, it's really important that we understand that this is part of the Grow Your Own program that Minnesota is really developing to grow our own teachers, to address teacher shortage, but also to address, to address diversity in the classroom. And so there's a Grow Your Own grant that's out there that we are going to be applying for to help any funding for this course. And then we will recruit students, diverse students, as well as low-income students, as well as any students who are interested in education overall. But it will actually help us with that teacher shortage. Go ahead. Prerequisites, this is through an Oakham Ramsey, and there are some prerequisites as far as GPA and MCA scores, but it's not terribly rigorous. The GPA is 2.6 GPA. MCA scores, you need to be in the top 50% of your class for MCA scores. Or you could be in the top 50% of your class as far as ranking. Or if none of those apply and you're highly recommended by a teacher in your school, in your principal, then you can apply and be accepted that way as well. So this program is really a nice way for many, many students to take a CIS program and get some college credits. So I really like that. The estimated cost, the cost is $3,000 for a semester course. But like I said, we're applying for a grant that will fund that entire $3,000. Can't tell you if we've gotten it yet, so, don't know. And I did ask Tina, is this reimbursable? And we're not sure, but we're thinking no. But there are no other costs associated with this except for just a few professional development things. Again, that those are all reimbursable at 35%. So the professional development part of getting ready for the class will probably cost us about, I don't know, $450 or something like that. So that was the second one. And then the last one is an additional College in the Schools course, Chamber Singers. And this is actually a swap out. We had a CIS a cappella choir. They're going to be dropping that one because we don't have other CIS courses in tandem with that in the band area. So this is really a replacement for the other CIS course, just so that you know as you're reading through this. So this is a CIS for 10th through 12th graders. So that's really nice that we have a CIS course that's available to 10th grade. Not often do we get that either. So go ahead, you can move to the next one. He's got this really nice summary and rationale that I'll let you read on your own. The documents, I believe, were attached to your agenda as well. But the rationale behind this, this is an audition course. And this course would be taken as a second music course. So they'll take their regular choir course and then audition if they want to be in the chamber. And then they would take the second course. And actually, this is going to be a cost savings because this will happen during the school day. And typically, chamber choir happens after school and you pay that additional advisor fee to the chamber. So that won't happen anymore. So this is actually a cost savings rather than any expense at all. So you can go ahead to the next one. So the prerequisites, you have to have a year of high school choir. Additional staffing needed? No, because he's just dropping the other one and adding this one. No resources, no training, so just a, just a cost savings, basically. So those were the three courses. So two were CTE courses and two were College in the Schools courses, to summarize that. And I'm just wondering if you have any questions. Mr. Colwell came today in case you have any questions as well that I maybe can't answer, so.
I have a question. I always do. So the first two courses, obviously, you would only take those once.
Yes.
Education.
Yes, it's a good question, yeah.
But the choir, Chamber Singers one is for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Would they be able to get a CIS credit 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade if they did it all three years?
Excellent question, and I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and I don't know that it'll be offered every year necessarily, depending on numbers. But yeah, that's a good question that we bring back to...
We'll have to check into that because, yeah, they can take choir every year and get credit. This credit comes through an Oakham Ramsey. Not sure you can have that on their transcript more than once because it'll participate in their transcript analysis. But yeah, we'll need to ask that question. Good point.
Are all of the classes through an Oakham Ramsey or are the other ones?
The last one is through an Oakham Ramsey. Oh, no, I take that back. The Intro to Ed is also through an Oakham.
Okay.
I said that came about because we're students, what they're interested in, or is it just that we need to have?
That's a good question.
I'd say it's company of both, I think with all of our departments. So last few weeks, all of our ninth graders have been doing like an interest survey for themselves in that CTE kind of cluster area. And similarly, at the high school, we're trying to find some areas we're short, some gaps that we have in our programming. So part of it is interest-driven. Part of it is based on like Herfindall knows what he wants to do with his department and he's pretty passionate about it. And there've been a lot of conversation with some of these smaller departments in fax, business, to try and keep you being relevant, keeping up with the changes, and finding things that will interest kids. So Anne Runk is a big part of this. She's our CTE kind of coordinator at the high school. Cindy and Lori are taking them pretty heavily. Just to kind of do a wholesale evaluation of where we're missing the mark on a few things. We know kids will be interested. We've heard education's one that we've been short over the years. So we want to be able to add in some of these things. We feel like we'll serve a number.
That question, think like back last year, as the high school tried to connect the career pathways better, those types of programming, connect the career pathways so kids can have some of those experiences. Really feeling what, some exploration. And there's some funding with the, with Grow Your Own. I mean, with the, with the Ed one, there's going to be potential funding and things like that as we dig into it from MDA and stuff like that.
That one actually came from, we were talking about the youth services program where students sign up for youth services and they go into elementary classrooms and help out. But they really haven't had any experience or training or any of that. And the teachers don't have time to really train them when they come in. So that's when we started to really think about, there's so many kids interested in the youth services, but we need to provide that training ahead of time. So now that's what we're going to be doing. Any student now who takes the Intro to Ed in the first semester will be able to go into the youth services program second semester and work with all those schools and have a really good idea of what education is about. So that's part of that too. And I misspoke about the choir. Choir is through Central Lakes. We already pay that tuition with Central Lakes for the old class we had. So that'll just be an equal swap. So that won't be an extra cost. It's, it's just the Intro to Ed that's through an Oakham Ramsey. And that course is accepted through, to the U of M or any of the state schools will accept those credits. So that's a big deal.
So your group that that's replacing, that was audition as well, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So then that class for the education would be a requirement before they can do the youth services?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, it's always exciting to hear what's going on.
So we are trying to get our registration book all set and ready to go. So we do need, kind of need to know if these will be approved so we can get them hot off the press.
You have a motion to approve these courses?
I'll move to approve the three new courses as presented by the curriculum instruction director.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to our safe and healthy culture and first reading of policies.
Right, so first reading of policy 807. This is a, was an interesting policy and worked through with the policy committee. If we would, if we were to pull up MSBA right now, we would see that the changes in that policy are to the tune of about five pages, where our simple old version was about one page. And so we really tried to keep the simplicity of the, of the policy moving forward. And so as you can see, our policy is just one page again with just adding some very simple statements about OSHA guidelines, which we already have in there, following state and federal programs. So just, it was a way to keep it shorter. So with this policy, going through the policy committee one time here tonight for first reading, and then we'll bring it back forward again for a second reading at the next board meeting. If there are any questions, in the meantime, get them to Dr. Wilson and you can investigate them further.
We are now at the end of the agenda, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Candy, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0. We are adjourned at 6:41 and we'll take a 10-minute break before we go into our work session.